Oh my, reminds me of a video. All right, so we call the meeting to order. Do I read this after we have a quorum, right? Otherwise, we don't have a meeting. So we do have a quorum. We've got three planning commission members. And while we're all sitting here in person, this meeting in its entirety is streamed live on Orange County's YouTube channel, available at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW dot YOUTUBE DOT COM backslash backslash C backslash ORANGE COUNTY VIRGINIA SPOLDOWN. So you can tune in there. As I said, we do have a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Or do you have some changes to the agenda we'd like to discuss? Move approval. So moved, but second?
My second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye for approving the agenda as written?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Now, when do we want to introduce our new planning commissioner?
That'll be your next item of business under new business. We have introduction of Mr. Nichol, Mr. Brian Nichol.
Okay, I feel like we should do it now since he's going to be voting and stuff, right?
Because- Absolutely, that is your new business. So number one, four A, I'm for it.
Yeah, we still have to approve the minutes, but let's skip to four real quick and introduce Brian.
Okay, fair. Thank you very much, Mr. George. So Mr. Brooks actually would normally be the person to- Chairman Brooks would be normally the person introducing Mr. Nichol as the new planning commissioner for District Five, but in his absence, I'll make just a short introduction and then it was appropriate for Mr. Nichol to introduce himself in his interest for serving on the commission. So I will say at the June meeting, at a June meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Nichol was recognized as the new representative from District Five, nominated by Supervisor Frame from District Five. Mr. Nichol is due to the area as a resident, but is a long time- I'll let me explain stuff a little bit more, but a long time visitor and owner at Lake of the Woods. And so he does the east end of the county very well and is becoming more and more familiar with the rest of the county as a new resident, or relatively a new resident. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Nichol and we talked a little bit about goals for the commission as well as his experience coming from other places. He's originally from Indiana and has lived in Northern Virginia before being located in two. Mr. Nichol, now would be the time for you to talk a little bit about your values and goals for serving on the commission.
Great, thank you. Well, great to meet you in person here at my first meeting. So moved to Virginia back in 2006. And so moved originally to Northern Virginia, up in the Harkin Reston area, and then bought a place at Lake of the Woods in 2008. So we've been here in Orange County as property owners for 13 years, almost 14. And in the course of those years, we ended up moving full time down to Lake of the Woods in District Five and did that about February of 2020, about a month before the pandemic. The timing was good there, for sure. And I spent a couple of decades in public service. And when the opening came up, I talked to Supervisor Frame about my interest. I have a background in transportation and transportation planning generally. But I've worked in transportation issues for the last 30, 40 years. I want and have a desire to serve my community in Orange County. And public service has always been a part of my life, no matter where, when I was a public servant, like I am now, serving on this commission, but also working for public servants across the country. So I'm honored to be selected, nominated by Mr. Frame, approved by the Board of Supervisors, and look forward to joining you all. Thank you very much for the warm welcome.
Awesome, very good. Pleasure to meet you. I have just one question for you. What part of Indiana?
Well, I spend most of my time in Indianapolis area, but I went to the University of Evansville. And by virtue of a couple of roles I had, I was all over the state. And I was in charge of the Transportation Department, so-
For Indianapolis?
For all of, for Indiana, for the DOT. So I saw every nook and cranny. And obviously, but my residence was in Indianapolis area.
Okay, great. Well, how interesting. You have someone who hails from Indianapolis and someone who hails from Cincinnati sitting on the planning commission. Although I've been in Virginia for longer than I was in Ohio.
Well, I grew up in Westchester, Ohio.
Okay.
So I don't, I'm not sure where in Cincinnati area you were, but I spent the first part of my life growing up, going to school.
Awesome.
You know, I'm a born a Buckeye, sort of part Hoosier, and then here in the Commonwealth, the rest of the remainder.
Very good. Well, we'll have to get together and chat about-
Absolutely.
About the Midwest, so, awesome. Good? Okay, great. All right, so welcome, thank you. It, I find it fun and rewarding, and I think you will too. So, great. All right, so we're going to go back to Agenda Item Number Three, which is approval of the minutes. I hope I didn't put us in legal jeopardy there by skipping, so I'm sure we'll survive. But do I have a motion to approve or amend? Are there any amendments to the minutes? What's your, what's your pleasure? Julie, or Brian?
I need to show them approval since I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, send that.
I can second it.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion to approve as written and a second. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
And I will abstain since I was not present.
Okay, right. Oh, so that's still good, right? Still a majority.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, very good. So the minutes are, oh, I guess I should say all those in favor say nay? Okay, great. Minutes are approved? All right, very good. New business, we just did that? Public hearings, none? So we're off to the work session, which is the Planning Commission Work Program. And I guess I'll turn that over to you, Josh. Was there something ahead of that that you wanted to discuss? When are we gonna, I can't remember now.
I will have a director's report later in the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
And given that we do have the absence of two of our members, I will keep my remarks on the work program brief. And I will have some remarks that I've shared with Mr. Nichol before he was installed here and actually serving to let him know that this is a work in progress, that we are standing up and establishing a program of work for the planning commissioners and for the planning commission. Obviously, you're supported by staff and will continue to be supported by staff. We'll speak more to that. But I do want to, I do want to give good opportunities to the two members who are not present here tonight to be involved in the discussion that you all are going to have. So I just want to say, I've received, I've solicited input for developing this work program since the beginning. And I've received that input verbally from phone calls with individual commissioners. And this is really the beginning, this is an update of saying that I've received input from everyone except our newest commissioner specifically, although Frame is the topic and I know he's been, I know he's been thinking about it. So, in short, I'll run through a recap of what I've heard and where I think it will be at the next meeting and the next time I give you an update on the work program. I have heard from, from every installed commissioner except for Mr. Nichol. And I have heard that, go on a top down here, I've heard that comprehensive plan needs updating, that that needs to be looked at in a way that is consistent with the focus on the Germania Wilderness Area as a high growth and area designated growth in the county. But that unlike the most recent updates to the comprehensive plan, which dates to 2018 and specifically focused on the east end of the county, that we're ready to take that for granted essentially as a resolved matter of policy with designated growth area to turn our attention specifically to the other areas of the county, both more broadly, but also looking at specific areas. I've heard from this community in particular that there's an interest in doing things both in each individual district, I'd say things, doing, conducting activities in each individual district that relate to community infrastructure, which could, which will include roads, bridges, schools, libraries, and the utilities that are in those areas. But everything that makes up a community and doing it in a way that is going to encourage high community participation. So the concept is to go to schools and to have essentially open houses for the commissioners to lead within their own districts, listening towards listening programs. That kind of activity for five different commissioners over five different districts is not something that I would encourage you to undertake in a two or three month period or in any sort of short term, but probably over the course of the next year. So as we narrow down some focus, I would apply that. That said, you certainly would want to coordinate with each other and perhaps lay off each other. Those folks that may be at opposite ends of the county might be very helpful to attend some other meetings in the other districts and get the perspective from the other ends of the county. Likewise, those that are in adjoining districts may have some, some issues that are in common to the two, but we do need to coordinate basically meetings where businesses not being conducted by not having more members of this commission present. Unexpectedly, add a meeting that you might want to have under fairly standards. So we need to talk about all that. But as a big picture item, going from looking at comprehensive plan countywide to looking at the counties, the citizens of this county's inputs on community infrastructure on a district by district basis was, was one of the big picture ideas that I heard from a couple commissioners. In addition to that, I heard very specifically looking at some of the natural, cultural, environmental, and historic resources that we're studying in great detail and depth in the Germania Wilderness Area from Commissioner Zalemaker in the comprehensive plan update. As we look at these areas specifically, including areas that had not, subjects that had not been covered in the comprehensive plan in the past in as much detail as was covered in the most recent update to the portion of the county that covered Germania Wilderness. So that model, Germania Wilderness, is really held forth. I think it's a great model for the rest of the county as we update the comp plan. So those were some of the, again, kind of big, big picture items that I was hearing. In looking at some of the land use categories in the comprehensive plan, we have an A1 or agricultural one, agricultural two designation that does not correspond with the zoning districts. It has a planning tool, it has a purpose. And what I heard from Commissioner Kepel particularly was looking at carrying capacity of land, its ability to have a yield, a residential density and a yield, and what that rate might be. Of course, there are a lot of factors that go into that, including factors outside of governmental control, including conservation easiness, soil and water suitability for draining fields and wells that are separate of the public utilities and other infrastructure. But specifically looking at what carrying capacities would be and what the minimum lot areas within the A1 and A2 designated growth, designated land use districts would be. I heard from Chairman Brooks specifically about targeted text amendments, some of which have been undertaken in the last several years to implement the comprehensive plan, both from 2013 and the 2018 update for the Germania Wilderness Area in particular, of looking at some of the subjects related to housing and land development within the county, so land use and land development. We are working on a program of that. And I will, again, because this is the first time I'm bringing some of these ideas forward and I hope to have your two colleagues at the next meeting to discuss these in greater detail. I won't go deeply into it, but I do want to distinguish between those things that are appropriate for the commissioners to want to be involved in and to lead with staff support, and those things that staff would be the primary actor on and doing most of the work on. And a lot of the textual amendments that may come forth would have staff that's not leading perhaps, but definitely doing the bulk of the work. So I would not expect any of the five planning commissioners to really grapple with a text amendment to any of the codes as the prime mover in that effort. But there was interest that if we do examine the codes top to bottom and look for both updates as well as on certain subject areas. We looked at special land uses, one being special use permits as they're granted in the code for any number of uses within the different districts. And one land use in particular that's been quite a bit of discussion in the last six months is solar energy generating facilities of some scale, not at the site scale, but a utility scale. And it's been discussed, including at your last meeting, what the best regulatory approach to take would be toward those. And I would say, as I said last time, that the special use permanent process gives a great amount of latitude and ability for the commission and the board to act on the unique circumstances of every case. However, as the commission has set criteria now for continuing, excuse me, for considering special use permits, that are pretty good. There are some issues related to height, mass, and scale of used sheds. They're not particularly detailed related to large land uses of a certain type, like a solar energy, solar energy generating facility. So we're looking to add some things that we talked about with people for some additional criteria to consider and maybe some standards or guidelines in this criteria. So that was really, top to bottom, what we had, what I have heard back from you all. Like I said, I'm still waiting for 20% of the commission to bring in brand new ideas. And with those brand new ideas, then we'll start to put them in a matrix and have you all talk about priorities, what would be a five year program, which could extend beyond all of your terms potentially, what would be a two and three year program, what you might want to look at in the next six to 12 months. But that's my report on the work program.
Very good, thank you, Josh. Do either of you have any comments or questions?
I appreciate the detail that you provided and some of the input. That'll be helpful. Obviously, as a member, I would do as much listening as possible. Speaking of the listening tour, this will be my first foray into understanding what your issues are and how we want to approach it. I look forward to collaborating with the rest of the commission members and advancing a good work program that, you know, helps our county.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Just one comment I have, Josh. So you have a list of things that we're interested in and we're going to prioritize. So like, what, what metric are we going to use to prioritize? Are we just gonna, I mean, it seems like we're going to need to do a little bit of data collection. So like, you know, I heard infrastructure. It's like, okay, you know, what, what are the implications if that's the last thing versus the first thing? Particularly on the land use category, which I'm quite passionate about because I actually see a connection between the lack of good zoning and the need for infrastructure. And those things kind of go together. And so it could be that, could be they're linked more than we think. But I think we're going to need some data in order to be able to prioritize. Because I don't want to just prioritize, I mean, me personally, I can't speak for them. But I, me, I don't want to prioritize on a motion or want. So I want to try to get some data with some, hey, you know, if we don't do this, these are the potential implications. If we don't do this, these are the potential implications. That would also fit into, you know, sort of our timelines, right? So near term things that have near term implications. I think, you know, we would want to look at those first. Things that are longer term and negative or positive implications happen over a longer period of time, like we'd want to prioritize those, you know, later. Those are just my thoughts.
Sure, sure. So as it relates to prioritization, a lot of that is based on values. And the community's values are expressed in the comp plan right now. So we have a starting set of values. But again, a 2013 comprehensive plan with a 2018 focus on a development area is certainly not going to encompass the E2021 values of Orange County. So we will start with the values that we know or share as adopted in the comprehensive plan. Then I think it's appropriate for your discussion, for me as staff and the commissioners to, you know, look around at the comprehensive plan and conduct your own evaluation and your own sense of importance and priority. But I would create a matrix that demonstrates the correlation to the comprehensive plan in terms of an objective goal or an objective plan, a value that's stated as it relates to your term or the near term or long term, the priority in terms of timeliness. That is going to be based on some observations and some data and some conclusions drawn from that data about what they feel we were preparing some of this material for you to consider is more a near or long term proposition in terms of impact. But I think that that is fairly debatable. I think that's a worthwhile area of discussion. Again, also defining those horizons, you know, near term for some people can mean three years and near term for others can mean six months. So I think we need to define some of those horizons.
Yeah, makes sense. So it almost seems to me like on some of the issues, before we get to sentence, maybe we want to have a framework, but I think that's all we're going to need to be, if we're going to do this listening thing. We're going to need to be ready to hear what people have to say and potentially adjust the schedule. But I, yeah, good. So I just think we're going to need more than just the list. Here's the list, let's prioritize. We're going to need the list. I like the idea of tying it to the comp plan. And I think that we're going to probably want to see some data. I don't know what. That's just my, my thought.
Yeah, he's good to make sure you have some data to support your priorities.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, anything else?
No, work plan.
No, work plan, all right. Well, let's call, so I guess our work session is officially done. We don't need to take any action?
No.
Okay.
I would, like I said, I will update you as we go along as I've been doing for the last three months. So this was, this was really the first chance that I had to report out what I heard from us folks, given we have new commissioners. So we're looking forward to hearing from him. Now we can really start putting on the table. Next item will just be additional statutory board update.
Great, well, I'm very, very happy that this has come together because it would be good to just have some structure and some things that we're agreeing, we agree on our goals. So, very good, thank you, Josh. All right, moving on to item number seven, old business, none. So that one's easy. Item number eight, reports. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything to report? Thank you. Go, great. Mr. Gillespie, what do you have for us on a planning and development report?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So what I've, what I have been doing in the last couple of months is trying to give the departmental report and then also specific to the area of interest of the planning commission some dates. First, I would say we are, after a period of rapid interest in boom in real estate transactions, we are seeing a slowdown in building permits. And so the last year and a half, people in pandemic led to a tremendous amount of home renovation projects as well as a pent up demand in new home construction. And that's been 20 to 30% higher at least across the board in much of the, certainly in our region. We're seeing a slowdown of probably 10 to 20% over the last month, give or take. That, that seems like a short time to look back, one month. But the reality of it is, we are, we have been so busy in terms of new permits coming in that to look back and see 30 days of slow growth, slower growth, means that we really and truly are hitting a period of some cooling off. That said, there are still plenty of new building permits and new housing being constructed in Orange County, which is great. It's a community of choice for the, for the region. Basically, straggling a couple of regions here, you all know that. So it is, because many of the projects have been renovation projects in terms of residential development, residential building permits, they're distributed throughout the county. We have seen some good growth in development, particularly in the town of Wardsville recently spurred on by, by new investment, commercial investment in the town. And we have seen some new residential and, new residential projects both in the town of Wardsville and the town of Orange, both of which are not normal for the growth pattern in this county, actually. So we're beginning to see some, some development being spurred by commercial, actually, the commercial investment that they've been around towns. So we're seeing a couple hundred new units coming up in the city of town of Orange, which is a significant number. And likewise, we're seeing the first residential apartment construction in the town of Wardsville. Last, I think it's 15 or 20 years. So it's, those are significant. So that's sort of the countywide picture. As it relates to the department, I do need to report that Sandra Thornton has, has turned in her resignation as planning manager. And Sandra has been keen to this, to the planning activities in Orange County for her tenure here, which is, I think, almost three years now. She is recognized by this commission recently for her diligence and her hard work in the pandemic and the face of difficult circumstances. Mrs. Thornton was, Mrs. Thornton will continue, I hope, to be an advisor to us and to be a resource to us. And we had that conversation. But for personal reasons, she is, she is not able to perform regular administrative activities. And we are going to be adding two additional planners to the department, which need to be managed by someone who's more available. So I need to report that. As it relates to the commission, I know you all have seen her face and rely on her guidance and expertise and counsel from your time on the commission and for your time for the last couple of years from Sandra. So she has also been the secretary to the commission. And Mr. Brooks, Chairman Brooks, has suggested that for this meeting and going forward when he's back officially to recognize Tracy Newman, who is here this evening as the secretary to the commission in place of Sandra. So there's a seamless transition, a handoff from Sandra to Tracy. So I want to recognize that. Otherwise, at the department, we are adding a new code enforcement officer. And that person will have greater responsibility for erosion assessment control programs in the county. And that's previously reported, but I just want to add, we're now in fiscal year 2022. And so that budget was approved in April to May and is in effect as of July 1. So we, we have an approved budget that's, that's in effect. And one of those positions that will be added will be a wholly new position for a code enforcement officer. There's a lot going on at the department, I'll just, I'll just say that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of those. If you wanted to go into a little deeper detail about our particular projects, I'll be happy to do that. I should also say we will soon see, do expect to soon see the development again, and that's the solar project, which was a special use permit project on about 400 acres of land of about 20. Very deep setback for visibility reasons. The solar energy generating facility, that, that approval and that project will actually be the first solar energy generating project in Orange County.
Sure, well, Orange County can survive it because, gosh, I mean, the whole world will end as soon as it goes in. All right, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Brian, Julie, do you, let me start with Julie first. Do you have any?
No, I don't have any questions.
No questions or comments? Brian?
No.
No? Okay, I've got a couple. So the, it's interesting to me that we've designated the GWAP as the growth district. And all the growth I heard about, you talked about just now, was not in that district. And so that's interesting.
Let me respond to that because I think I should have. So actually, I pointed out the Orange and Wardsville growth as somewhat anomalous to their fairly recent history, even going back 10, 10 plus years. In pure numbers, the amount of the building permits in the Germania Wilderness Area is much greater than what is going on in the towns. What's, what's significant?
What's what's significant, I think, and the reason I wanted to report it, is that we are seeing significant development within the towns, much of which had not occurred for for quite a period of time.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I would just say, you know, in my.
I'd say good on both sides.
Well, well, it depends on how you view it. In my district, I think a lot of people would view unplanned residential development as the opposite of good. So that's just, just sort of a, a comment there. So as far, the, the other question I had was, two, two more planners are coming. The, the code enforcement, so are they going to be focused solely on erosion and sediment or code enforcement in general?
Sure. No, it will be like David Smith, the code enforcement program manager, it will be basically dual added, really triple added, because it's zoning enforcement, which is probably half of, half or more of his responsibilities include confirming that a site plan approval is being executed in the field that is properly installed, basically inspected and approved, site level plans, any zone complaints, that's probably 50 to 60% of the chat out, erosion and sediment control, probably about two thirds roughly.
Okay.
And then a minor portion, and I should have mentioned earlier, this, will have a handout to add to your code books. We've given you code books at your last meeting or the one before, and this is a new insert. Orange County Board of Supervisors has adopted a new littering provision in the code related to solid waste. So in chapter 50, which is the solid waste section, there's a new section in here related to littering. We do not, the Sheriff's Office will enforce littering, Planning and Development Services will enforce the same household goods, debris, and refuse complaints that are on other properties in the county, not public eye, where he's not littering. And so Davis and the code enforcement officer, that's sort of the third leg, if you will, because he's primarily responsible.
Right. I've gotten actually some positive feedback on this from a number of places. As far, let me just ask you this question about code enforcement. So we've, and the reason I'm asking is just to make sure we're still using the right language. So we've always been a county that, you know, complaint driven enforcement. Is that shifting? Is that starting to shift a little bit, or is it?
No, that's.
So that's still the right language?
Right, and that is the norm in most counties.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're not like shifting to a person just driving around looking for, okay, great, all right. And then the last thing I have, this Madison facility, is that the one, that's the one that was approved like maybe three years ago?
That's correct. It was approved in 2018.
Okay, great. And so that's finally, they've sold it a couple times, and so that's finally getting underway. Do you know when they're going to start, roughly?
It is essentially pre-construction, right now, and start obviously a year term, I mean, we have to define year term, but say in the next month to two months, you'll see construction activity.
Are we gonna, we being the county, are we going to kind of look at that and see if there's any lessons learned, you know, like anything that we missed when we did the SGP?
Yeah, we can, absolutely. I I would suggest that that probably gets rolled into looking at the site considerations for SGP's, because there's a great example of a project that's underway right now.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, like if we missed anything, like are we seeing any noticeable degradation of roads, you know, all the sort of things that we, you know, have heard of or concerns, like it seems like we might want to just look at it and just see, you know, what's going on. Yeah, okay, great.
In terms to that, solar projects off the 20.
It is.
Okay, and where go the school?
It is. And so without getting into too much detail, because it's a large, complex project, I'll just say, we specifically spoke to them about timing of construction traffic related to the school schedule. They have a school schedule, they're pretty aware of first day of school, they're aware of breaks, they're aware of activities and events, but also we have a very, very frank discussion about the need to, to be, so by all the conditions of the permit as it relates to not, you know, not allowing releases of sediment from the property, so not only being a good steward of the resources on the site, but the typical construction traffic management that needs to occur with a mat and potential wash down at the street, so there's, there's no release out onto the public rights of wave, which is a normal requirement, but sometimes things happen, and a day or two later, somebody finds out about it, we just said that's, that's not acceptable. So made it very clear that if we hear from the neighbors that I had any complaints related to tracking, that they will immediately have to remedy the situation. So it's a high, yes, it is a high visibility location, and high traffic here in a period, so that traffic safety is important for them as well as the ability to keep their site clean.
So after, so wait, so some other time, do you can, I'd like to know who the points of contact are, because you know, someone should mention to them visibility and that this is the first project in Orange, and if they screw it up, so to speak, I mean, there could be long range implications for every other solar project that follows.
Absolutely. I'll be probably happy to share their contact information, but I participated in the pre-construction meeting for this project, and I specifically emphasized the points that I've just discussed.
Yeah, okay, great.
What's the anticipated construction timeframe?
Yeah, that's a great question. I I knew the answer to that before you asked it, probably.
I thought it was six months.
Yeah, I think it is six months.
Yeah.
So when does it due to start?
In the next month or two.
Okay, so maybe we're clearly building into the school year.
Absolutely.
Yes. So, okay, very good, thank you. Oh, one last thing on, on Sandra, you have a card?
I do. I have a card that I'd like to text her after.
Okay. And, you know, usually we do, what do you call it, like a resolution or something? Do we want to tee something up for the next, I mean, I know, I know Chairman Brooks would be asking this question, so so add a deference to you, Chairman Brooks, on bringing this up. So like, we'd usually do a resolution, some sort of letter of service, so are we going to do that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And I would say those of you who know, seen her and have talked to her over time, if she's available, I know she'd love to hear from folks. She has the county email address, and if you need her phone number, if you might want to contact her, that's it. That's your touchstone.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other, Brian, Julie, any other questions for Josh, or anything you want to poke at the planning department on, this is your chance. I mean, you'll have another chance on item number nine, but, yeah, pick it out now. No? Okay, very good. All right, so let's move on to to item number nine, commissioner comments. Brian, I'll start with you, do you have any?
Just thank you for the warm welcome. I want to thank Josh for taking some time to sit down with me and and walk through some of the process items, and certainly I've stopped by the office and met Tracy. She's been super over the phone, she's obviously working now as the secretary, congratulations or condolences maybe, but thank you for, for your help. And I want to recognize Jim, who I, whose place I'm taking for spending some time with me to orient me in terms of some of the materials, and Jim's just a fantastic person, and and he's been very helpful, and he's also offered his assistance in any way that he could concern, not as a former, in a formal role, but certainly in a way that could help me know about things that he's worked on. And just to everybody here, thank you for the warm up, I really appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Brian. Julie?
I don't have anything additional to say.
Really? I mean, you usually have a lot to say. Nothing today? No? Okay. All right, I, I don't have any comments, just, I do have a question. Did we do a resolution for, for Jim as well?
We have not, and Chairman Brooks said, yeah, he'd ask him before in August.
Okay, got it.
So we may ask Jim if he's available for 10, and so that, that also was a little bit up in the air.
Yeah.
And I will point out that I believe that your September meeting, or meetings, will be in the new building, we hope. We had said, I think a month or two ago, we thought it might be August or September, and it looks like September. So just, we may be saying goodbye to to more than just some, some former planning commissioners in this room, maybe saying goodbye to certain.
Yeah, well, it's been a good room, spent a lot of time here for the last 20 years. All right, well, with that, no, no commissioner comments. Our next meeting date is August 5th, 2021, and with that, I think we're done, and take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed.